Exactly. Do it legally. Absolutely.
Yes, and tell you about it first?
I have, I have.
Oh, no.
Nothing, just... I have a funny thing to have. I'll tell you later. No, no, no.
It's just gonna be two, it's just gonna be...
Drinking.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, we're getting ready to start.
Actually, I...
It was crazy, right?
I saw the picture of the pig.
Yeah, they were sitting... They were sitting, uh, down on that private property outside my wine bar. The pig in their lap.
Where's the twenty, where they at?
To be arrested by police on the twenty-seventh.
Yeah. It was cute, it was not more than...
Get on the twenty-eighth. We'll be at... I wanna say that. He's making with us cash.
No, I have one. Can I have this like that?
I think it's probably like twenty bucks and, and, and... Yeah, yeah.
You know, I'm older.
Why, why you wanna go there? You don't like, you don't, you don't look, you look like you're twenty-five.
Yeah. Thank you. You're good, you're good. And you're telling tales like that.
Well, you know, the Bible says, exalt one another, hallelujah.
Oh, my gosh. That's cute. My favorite scripture's always been about like water turning into wine. I don't know why.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That was his first miracle.
Yes, it was, yes, it was.
I can't, I can't do that anymore. You know, um, they were...
But it's really, it's beginning.
Unfortunately, that... A lot of change is happening. So, we, um, it is, um, dawned on me that we're gonna transfer onto things. We'll be able to have opportunities.
Getting toward it.
I now call to order the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, August fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, at six-thirty P.M. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Thank you for being here tonight. Roll call, please.
Chair Alahuza's.
Here.
Vice Chair Panther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Kikdis absent and excused. Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Item number one on the agenda is the update to attempt to purchase Tarpon Avenue hotel property. Mr. Licoris will present his item.
Yes, this is, uh, obviously, you've been asking me to give updates during the regular commission meetings. This is, this is something that you've taken as, as part of the CRA board. So, I wanted to give you, since we're winding down to the end of the process, uh, an update. We've pretty much got to an end in the regular negotiations. Our last efforts to negotiate, to try to get a reasonable price, um, to attempt to purchase the property, um, will be through mediation that we scheduled with a mediator and the tentative date for it is September eighteenth. This'll pretty much be the last step. Obviously, we're preparing the strategy on our side. They'll come with their attorney with theirs, and we'll have a very experienced real estate mediator that'll be there, and, uh, we'll see if we can get to a price that you can review and decide if you wanna move forward to purchase. So, I fully, I fully intend that after the meeting, the eighteenth, probably the, probably the first, or at latest, the second of October, um, you'll be meeting at a CRA board again, either to move forward with, uh, looking at the offer to purchase, or, or ending your attempts as a CRA to, uh, purchase the property after that thing. After you've done this, after we've done this mediation, bring it to you. We've really gone through every step process, every step and process possible to try to purchase the property. And, uh, then, uh, you know, we'll need to move on later on. If any other action be taken, we'll move on to you in your capacity as a Board of Commissioners, not as a CRA. So, hopefully, the first meeting in October, um, latest the second, we'll be able to give you where we are, and then you can make a definitive decision of what you wanna do as a CRA.
Thank you, Mr. Licoris. Mediation is the final, very important step in the process, and, uh, looking forward to see, uh, that we have a resolution with that. There's a big difference between, uh, the city appraiser and what, what they asking. So, it is good that we're going to mediation to get that done. Vice Mayor Panther.
Yes, thank you. I will look forward to the results of, 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 of this mediation. I, I, I do support this, uh, idea that we needed to work with the property owners to, uh, purchase their property privately, and, um, it's, it, 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 it's my hope that through this process, that we'll be able to reach a price that, that, that's, that's agreeable. I realize in our backup, we have far different views on, on, on what it's worth, but that's not uncommon in real estate transactions, and I'm, I'm hoping that, um, uh, that they'll, they'll be able to meet us somewhere in the middle, and, uh, you know, on the advice of our counsel and our real estate attorney, we can decide if, um, we have a good offer or not, and then reconvene as the board to, to decide, as the CRA board, do we, uh, move forward or not, and that, and thus affects what we do a, as, as the BOC. I continue to say that this was brought to us, um, by a very large group, 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 group of citizens. I, I think the second largest since the Walmart issue, uh, when we had the issue on, 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 on the bayou. Uh, we, we, we were asked a, as a board to find a way to remedy the problem that is on, 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 on the bayou with three specific properties, this being the worst one. And, uh, I think we, as a board, found a public use for that property and are thus trying to, to do the purchase a, 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 as we are now. So, I would ask for, because we need patience from, 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 from the, from the public. I realize it's taken almost a year now, but these, 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 these things take, take, take time, and I'm hoping that, uh, regardless of what happens, we can stay out of court and not have to go, and not, and not have to go that route if we don't have to. But it's my goal that no matter what, that we'll continue to, uh, clean up those motels on, on the bayou, and hopefully, we'll, we're able to obtain this, this property at a reasonable price and put it to a public use and, and the problems that, that have festered there.
Thank you. Commissioner Seber.
Uh, yes, thank you for the update. Uh, I've been concerned from the beginning about this project because of the money we're spending of our CRA funds. I did ask you for how much we spent so far in attorney fees, and it's twelve thousand five hundred from what you told me. And I know that we agreed it was necessary, but I'm thinking that's a facade grant or a restaurant grant, and so it bothers me that that money's gone out. Um, and of course, I would not support spending a million dollars, uh, on, on this property without it going to referendum. So, I have some concerns. I've voiced them from the beginning, but, um, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to getting an outcome. I'd really prefer for there to be an outcome with our Economic Development Manager and, and so a developer coming in and buying this property instead of the city because, uh, we obviously don't have the funds. So, uh, wait for the outcome, and then we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr.
It was my understanding that the mediation is expected to be completed by October, like the first week of October. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's scheduled for September eighteenth. Obviously, the result, there may be some time after it for, you know, final offer, kind of what, however it goes there. So, I imagine shortly, we will be able to go the first or second meeting in October, um, with a definitive where we are and a definitive price where, where they are.
Are we able to put like a cap on, um, how many hours our eminent domain attorney that we hired can move forward with the mediation? Something along those lines? Is that something that we could look at? Or is he even handling the mediation, or is this just a company?
Yes, he's handling the mediation. I don't know if we can put it, mediations, I've been in them many times. Some go very short and some go very long. So, I think it's depending on the process it goes. Obviously, if it gets, you know, if it gets too far in the process and we're not making a headway, we'd probably end it. But again, it, you, you can't really dictate until, till you're in the mediation and the strategy of where you are. If you're moving the right way, if you're not, to stop. So, it'd be very hard to put a limit on, okay, we gotta stop after two hours, or obviously, it's gonna be a charge by the hour, but, you know, it'd be very hard to put a limitation on us, uh, but, you know, we'll kinda gauge it.
Are you gonna be at that also?
Yes.
Okay.
Myself and the, our, our attorneys that we hired, Mr. Helenjo will be there, our attorney will be here, there, and I will be there.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Not right now, no.
Oh, thank you. We are now going to the public comments of this item. Any public comment?
Beardalakis five-one-four Ashland Avenue. Where do we begin on this? This is so... ridiculous, a travesty. What do we wanna call it? First off, as I've told you all before, the assessment on these properties are gonna come in over a million, plus, I'm a little ticked. There's no letter in there, in the backup yet online, that talks about the nine hundred and the one point four, and you're leaving out information. What about the appraisal for Mr. Hoffman's property? Because ultimately, in order to do what you're conniving to do, you may be able to purchase the Sun Bay, but your ultimate goal is to force Mr. Hoffman to sell his property. So, what's appraisal on that? So, giving us this nine hundred to one point four million is kinda leaving us in a vague where we don't even know what you're gonna have to spend possibly on Mr. Hoffman's property. Secondly, let me show you right now what the biggest magic trick here is, okay? Look on your agenda. This is the CRA. All right? The CRA is a separate board legally set up to run the Community Redevelopment District where this property falls in. Under the CRA, they are not bound by the charter to come to you, to ask you if you want them to purchase this property. The charter says for the city to purchase property, anything over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars has to go to referendum. Two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand or less, they can buy it on a four-to-one supermajority vote. You won't have that opportunity to weigh in because they're shuffling this under the CRA. So, they here, the same people just wearing different hats, will now be able to spend anywhere from a million to maybe two-and-a-half million dollars on two parcels of property that maybe make up an acre. Yet, we've come before you, year after year after year. You can take that same one-point-five million dollars and leverage it with a Florida Communities Trust Property Grant and purchase seventy-four acres in protection on the Anclot River. And why are we doing this? Are we gonna turn around every time somebody gets shot or hurt, go buy their property? I understand we were hurt and wounded, and Charlie's death left a big blow in our hearts, and there is anger, but we can't go around trying to buy little pieces of property and say it's for a public purpose when we know from the beginning what the purpose was. You have to take a look in the mirror and stop this nonsense. As Commissioner Seber says, you've already spent a restaurant grant or facade grant, and the CRA isn't that flush with money that you can do this.
Thank you.
Jack Spurk, two thousand and eight Golf View Drive, Tarpon Springs. I just wanna say that I am opposed to creating a park outside of a park. It's not anything that we need. I'm totally opposed with using CRA money for it. This is a misuse of the money that our Economic Development Officer has to create new business and improve existing businesses, and I never once, at any meeting I've attended, heard any discussion of any other options other than buying this property and even considering eminent domain. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Jim Col, excuse me, Jim Coliana, Circle Drive. I got some mixed emotions listening to this because, first of all, you gave the city manager permission to go forward anyway, and regurgitating all these parade of horribles that everybody's talking about, it failed to mention one thing, and that's the health, safety, and the welfare of the people of Tarpon Springs. That's nothing about we feel sorry for Charlie 'cause he was killed doing his job. This isn't about that. This is about making sure it doesn't happen again. The place was cleaned up and is looking cleaner now for one reason. Because the police department put a stop to it. We can't have the police department just take care of a bad area. You guys are doing the right thing. The CRA may be a separate and distinct group appointed by you, but you were elected by the people to do the right thing, and the right thing is to let the city manager continue, try to purchase a property, and then everybody can come up and tell you what they think you ought to do with it. There are no drawings, except for what was brought from the audience to hear, of what you may wanna do with that. Y'all will ultimately decide that. It takes five commissioners on this board to stay strong enough to see this through. Once you've seen it through, and you, then you'll be able to decide whether you can afford it or not, or the people will just make that decision. And that's the way democracy works. They elect somebody, you bring it back to the people, they make the decision. Don't ever quit doing that. We're one of the unique cities, not only in Florida, but in the U.S., and all you have to do is turn your TV on to see that. We still oper, operate by the, the strong democracy, and for God's sake, please don't stop that. Go forward, let's see where it goes, stay strong. It's one of these things that are controversial, but it's not the first thing Mark Licoris has been through that's controversial, I'll tell you that. So, please, stay strong, guys. Let's see this through, let's see what'll happen. Maybe we'll get it, maybe we won't. There's only one way to find out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mayor Panney.
Good evening. Mayor, Commissioner, Cindy Terapany, twenty-two North Spring Boulevard. Um, I just wanna echo what Mr. Coliana said. Um, on January tenth, the CRA authorized to begin the purchase of the property, authorized the city manager hire an eminent domain attorney and to hire an appraiser. This is, what you're talking about now is a mediation, which your eminent domain attorney has recommended that you do, if I understand the agenda correctly. Um, you've set a date to have that mediation, and it's just the step in the, another step in the process towards a decision that you've already made back in January. Um, I, some of you may know, um, I am a planner in my professional life, and I do work in eminent domain, and this is a very typical process to have a mediation, to see if the parties, when they're in the same room together, with a mediator, and they've actually, if I understand the agenda item correctly, you've hired a mediator to help facilitate that discussion. That mediator has no dog in the fight. He's merely there to see if he can come to an agreement between the two parties, and I urge you to continue on that process and see what comes out of it. Again, you made the decision on January tenth. I think you ought to keep moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Here and then? Do we have any other, uh, commission comment? And, um, well, thank you, Mr. Licoris. Looking forward to the, uh, a, uh, successful solution. Well, that concludes the CRA meeting. It's adjourned at six forty-six P.M. And we're now going to the regular session. I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, August fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, at six forty-eight P.M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alahuza's.
Here.
Vice Mayor Panther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Kikdis absent and excused. Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Milton Smith from the Mount Hermann Masonary Baptist Church. If you please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of the Legend.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we come to thee tonight to thank you, Lord. Thank you for this wonderful city. We thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight, and tonight, we pray for our city leaders, commissioners, mayor, city manager. Lord, we ask that you will continue to give them wisdom and knowledge as they lead this city. And Lord, we come tonight also to pray for peace, peace for our nation, peace for our state, peace for our county, peace for our city, and we just ask you to guide us tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Black and white just to flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are now going to the public comments on the items that will not be discussed this evening. If you have any comments, please come forward. Please state your name and your address for the record. You'll be given four minutes. Thank you.
Anita Protus, nine-on-one Base Shore Drive. Good evening, Board of Commissioners, mayor, citizens of Tarpon. We are one of the last of communities in the United States with such historic significance. We are a community that loves one another, nationalities, whatever. We are a family in Tarpon Springs, and that's what we tout on. We are a community of religious churches, of religion, and respect each other. And the reason I'm up here tonight, I was driving through town the other day, thinking about how we were on W, uh, on Channel Three with a concert that we're gonna have here this winter from a young Greek man who is world-renowned, and he was on again the other night. I think his name was Petros. Very interesting. And as I turned to the right, I saw our historic old city hall, how we all remember the, the meetings there with the windows open, and we used to shout out the windows, the vote, the numbers on the elections, but I became depressed. What are we doing? We're losing. The windows planes are rotting. The wood around the door is rotting. People come to Tarpon Springs 'cause there's no other community like us in the United States. We need to start working on that city hall. It is past, almost past the point of no return with the wood, the doors. We took the grass away and put something else there. The grass is beautiful around the trees and the plants. We're losing. Let's not lose our historic significance in this city. I'd like to see a, a city hall meeting in the old city hall again. They were exciting, they were fun. People were gathering the streets. I know you remember that. We all remember that, yelling out the windows, what's happening, what item? Those were in the old days, and they were good days. Our forefathers made that city hall. It is in bad, bad shape, and I hate to see us lose. Please, let's start doing repairs and bringing it back up to what it should be, the shining glory on our main street and, and Pinehouse Avenue. We have programs there at night, we have a lot of openings there. Let's not be ashamed of what we have, and let's keep a hand on all our historic, because once you lose it, you never get it back.
Mayor Perez, you're absolutely correct. We're planning to fix that. Mr. Licoris, would you please answer that?
Yes, the plans are about ninety-five percent done for the restoration of city hall. The money is budgeted in this budget that this commission is gonna pass, and we should be ready to go October one or after, as soon as the plans, it goes out to bid, but the plans are, are done for the restoration of the windows, for the re-bricking of the building like was done at city hall, and we should be ready to have the document to go out to bid and get it done for you.
Please put the grass back. I'll be glad to buy a mower for exercise and cut it for you, 'cause my doctor says I have to exercise more, and we need to check the palm tree. We used to have an arborist who would check that palm tree to make it live. I'm glad to hear that. I will come and cut the grass if you want me to.
I will get it.
Put it back, and, uh, let's not lose it. I had heard that someone wanted it out of the budget. We can't take our historic, uh, uh, buildings out of the budget. That's very important.
That's the jewel of the city, it will be restored.
And I saw on QVC, a very fine, easy-to-push lawnmower.
Thank you. Do we have any other, uh, comments? Here and then? Thank you very much. We're now going to the proclamation. Item number one, Rose Cemetery Centennial Commemoration. But before I read the proclamation, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank everyone who worked so hard to beautify the, uh, Rose Cemetery, including the Board of Directors, the volunteers, the Boy Scout, Ms. Christina Derry for taking leadership, leadership role in this effort. Thank you for doing that, and also, I'm very glad that the City of Tarpon Springs was able to contribute as well. Thank you all, and if you please stand to be recognized. I love you though, you worked on this project. Thank you very much. Thank you. And now, I would like to read the proclamation, the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation, whereas June fifteen, two thousand seventeen marked the centennial commemoration of Rose Cemetery formerly known as Rose Hill Cemetery in Tarpon Springs, and whereas Rose Cemetery located on Jasmine Avenue is a significant historic cemetery that preserves a strong African-American ethnic character, and whereas some of Tarpon Springs prominent citizens are laid to rest at the Rose Cemetery, representing a major part of our history and culture, and whereas it is the memory of those ancestors that makes Rose Cemetery a very special place. And whereas in March two thousand seventeen, Rose Cemetery was included in the National Register Historic Places, and whereas the mayor and the, and the city commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs would like to recognize and honor the historical integrity. And now, therefore, Chris Alahuza's, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, to hereby honor Centennial Commemoration of Rose Cemetery. Congratulations. Like accepted.
Personally, I wanna thank you for all the work that you've done. I'm gonna turn around. Thank you. You wanna say a few words? I'll hold this shirt.
To the mayor, vice mayor, city manager, and commissioners, I'd like to take this opportunity... to say thank you. And as one additional person I would like to say thank you to, and that's Anita Proto, who you just saw up here. And the reason I say that, because when times was hard and she was in, sitting in smell, she came out and helped, physically helped. And while LaCouris, Mr. LaCouris, when he was Chief Police Department, he was always there to give his help. And Chris has always walked in. And we say thank you for that. Thank you, because without your help, we would not have gained what we have today. And that reason, I said thank you for this, and with all the members of the Rose Cemetery Association, who's carrying on as me fading out because of physical disabilities, but the mental is still good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. (Applause). Hi, Danny, commission comments. Vice Mayor Banther wants to say a few words.
Yes, thank you. I think it's very impressive and very, and, and very, very unique how much we take care of that cemetery. And by we, I mean the, the city as a whole and volunteers. That, that's a very important part of our heritage, of our African-American heritage, and something we all, we all should, should be proud of and honor. And, and as well, Tarpon Springs as a whole has significant African-American heritage, especially as it relates to Pinellas County. So very glad that, that we honor that and that we keep that alive, and that we're doing everything we can to preserve an honorable resting place for those that lie there. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to the public comments. Christina, do you want to say a few words? If you please come to the podium and state your name and your address, please.
To the mayor, the vice mayor, the city manager, and the commissioners, I'd like just to say a few words about the Florida Nonprofit for Rose Cemetery Alliance and Perpetual Care. It's taken us a few years to get recognized, but we're here now. And I'd like to thank Mark LaCouris, city manager, for pointing out to me things that I shouldn't do, because there were quite a lot of them. And to thank Herb Elliott, our attorney, who's also stopped me getting into trouble. And Rogers Sulu, who has showed me the way, which has been very helpful. So we have a cleanup by Tarpon Springs Rotary Club early in October, and our new president, Kerry Root, supports us in this project. Everyone is welcome. I think all the Rotary people, including our mayor, Chris Alahuzis, has been helping, and the Cemetery Association, and the public who come to support us. We ask them to come again if they can. We're looking forward to our first board meeting, which is exciting for us. And of course, Gus Bilirakis spoke at Congress on Rose, which was really wonderful. And I'd like to thank Chris Alahuzis for the beautiful proclamation for the cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Annie Davs. I reside at 803 South Distance Avenue, Tarpon Springs. We cannot say thank you enough. So on behalf of the entire Board of Rose Cemetery, I stand to say again, we really appreciate all that has been done. It's been a long journey. It has been hard. It has not been easy. I think I was talking to Mr. Quarterman, and I think his tenure is about 28 years, so that's a long time. But we do have a rich history at Rose Cemetery, and our goal now is to preserve the history and culture of Rose Cemetery. And I want to thank everybody who has been helpful. There's a long list of people. And at the commemoration service, it turned out quite well, and we were very pleased to hear that Congressman Bilirakis spoke about Rose Cemetery on the Congress floor. That was a great opportunity for us. And I want to say especially thanks to Chief Cochin, because during the commemoration, the cars kept coming in, and I got a little bit nervous. Then I looked to the side, and I said, oh, he's got us covered, because I asked that. He come out and directed traffic, because we all know how it is out there on Jasmine Avenue. And again, I just, we're just appreciative for all that you have done, and we want to keep up the care of Rose Cemetery to preserve our history. We all want to be remembered. I hope we do. And the place to be remembered is where? At the cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments on this item? Any other public comments on this item here and then? Thank you very much. Thank you. We are now going to the item number two, Florida Hospital North Pinellas ER update. The presentation will be given by Tricia Williams, CEO of North Pinellas Hospital in Tarpon Springs. Nice to have you here.
Good evening. I fooled you.
Oh.
No, no worries. We're, we're a team. Good evening, mayor, city commissioners, city manager, Chief Cochin, and staff. Good evening, citizens of Tarpon Springs. My name is Robin Weichel, 1502 River Court Capital Campaign Consultant for Florida Hospital North Pinellas. Next to me is Tricia Williams, correct, President and CEO of Florida Hospital. Lovely lady. We're happy to have her with us tonight. We also have representation in the room. We have Charles Samarcus. If you can wave your hand. Sure most of you know him. He is the, the chairman of Florida Hospital North Pinellas Foundation. And we have Terry Smither. Wave your hand. Terry is the executive director of Florida Hospital North Pinellas. Thank you for being here. Thank you for the opportunity to present. We have a wonderful thing to present, which, you see the beautiful picture up on the screen here. How can you not start a presentation with that picture? How can you not smile? That is Commissioner Banther's daughters, Olivia and Maren Banther. And we're here for life. Florida Hospital North Pinellas is here for life. And Olivia had a near-death drowning experience at Florida Hospital, or at her pool, and Florida Hospital North Pinellas were able to save her life and send her care elsewhere for life-saving services. Again, Tricia was, is with me, and you're probably, most of you know me from education background. I'm here to educate and work with Florida Hospital North Pinellas, because we have a wonderful, wonderful thing in our community now. This hospital is amazing, and we're here to tell you the awesome things that they're And Mark, thank you, citizens. Thank you, commissioners. In March of 2016, you overwhelmingly, 80%, passed the referendum for the city to reduce the lease that the hospital, Florida Hospital North Pinellas, pays to the city in order to build a new state-of-the-art emergency room. That was what the referendum stated. The foundation board hired me, Robin, to raise, determined to raise $5 million or more with your help, to help assist Florida Hospital in this $15 million project. And Tricia will be able to share with you what Florida Hospital has done for this, for our community. The groundbreaking, that's the exciting part, early spring 2018. It looks like we're on track for, and if you see the background, that's a recent rendering of what it will look like in where we're rerouting the ambulance services to allow for accessible, for a better accessible to the emergency room. What are, what's a capital campaign here to do? We're here to expand the emergency room department, meet the growing needs of the community, enhance the facility, the equipment that we already have, and evolve the ER patient experience. And Tricia can share with you, they're already having great, amazing patient experiences in the emergency room that we're have, that we have right now. We're here for life. Florida Hospital is here for life. This is Frank and Ann Nixon. They are our co-chair. Ann Nixon was rushed to the emergency room a few years ago and with a serious brain injury and a brain, a brain problem, and Florida Hospital was able to save her life. Most of you know Ann and Frank. They're our co-chairs, and they've donated monetarily and with their time and support in this project. The history of compassionate care. We're here for life. 90 years, Florida Hospital. It was started 90 years ago by Mr. Burnett for the need for quality care in our little town of Tarpon Springs, and which is extended to North Pinellas and beyond. This is Dr. Al Cosi. He's an emergency pediatric doctor with All Children's Hospital for many years, and his life was saved for, when a heart attack here locally in Tarpon Springs. He's a resident. Wonderful man. He also just joined our foundation board to support the capital campaign and Florida Hospital North Pinellas. This is where I get to turn this over to this lovely lady, and she'll be able to share with you the accolades that Florida Hospital has successfully achieved over the last few years since they came into our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin, and thank you so much for your contribution and your leadership in this campaign. We're so very proud to provide the excellent care that we do here in Tarpon Springs, and work very hard to become nationally recognized for excellence in quality and safety. So Florida Hospital North Pinellas has been recognized by several agencies for the care that we provide here. And we recently won an award by the Leapfrog Group, and it's the only hospital in Tampa Bay, to receive the top general hospital award. And that is one of only 56 in the country, very elite award for the highest quality and safety. This is the agency that rates hospitals A, B, and C. And you hear that, and that's what the Leapfrog Group does. We're also the most consistent and reliable hospital in A ratings. We've been A rated since 2013, and that is the only hospital in the Tampa Bay area to be able to do that. So that takes very consistent work with our staff, physicians, and nurses to accomplish that. We're very, again, very proud of that team. We also partner, and we partnered with All Children's Hospital to provide the best pediatric care here, right here at home. They, we work with them to, and we worked with them to develop pediatric protocols in our emergency departments, in both emergency department here in Tarpon Springs and Palm Harbor, to provide that excellent care. These are only a few other of the accolades, and it's almost redundant because we keep getting recognized nationally. One of the areas that you saw in our stories is heart care. Right here at home, we've been nationally recognized for the best in cardiac care. One of that is from the American Heart Association. 2017, get with a guideline Stroke Gold Plus Quality Achievement Award with Target Stroke Honor Roll Elite Plus Award. That's a mouthful. Also, one of America's best hospitals for heart care. It's a Women's Choice Award. We just received that. And then we're also credited by the American College of Cardiology. That is the body that actually really runs, and physicians and cardiologists, that is their association. And they have accredited us for chest pain, being a chest pain center with primary coronary interventions, again, by the American College of Cardiology. Again, and within our own system, we are one of the top four hospitals out of 46 in emergency department throughput. That's how quickly you can get through and wait times. We're also one of the top nine hospitals in the emergency room patient experience. In our Palm Harbor ER, it's actually a perfect score. We're the top hospital in all of Adventist Health and, and both hospitals together, again, providing really great care for this community, because you deserve to have the very best in healthcare here, right here in Tarpon Springs. So what will this emergency department, with the renovations, what will it do? We're very, again, committed to our community. We already have invested many, many millions of dollars within our hospital. We invested, we've invested $70 million so far in Florida Hospital North Pinellas with several different projects, and that is not including this emergency department here, with investments in the facility itself and in other projects. Again, that's $70 million. In addition to that, from a community benefit, the hospital as a healthcare provider provides, and this year, we're, we're looking at $32 million in community benefit. Again, that is our mission. That is our sacred work to provide our community and the patients we serve. So the new emergency department will resolve several issues that we have. And as you'll see on the left, we are a 7,500 square foot emergency department currently with 13 beds, serving, and it was built to serve 11,000 patients. Well, how many patients do we actually see per year? Well, it's actually 26,000 every year that we see in our emergency department. Still providing great throughput and patient experience, but it's, it's a bit small. And we don't have those private rooms. The ER renovation will do that for us. It'll be a 14,000 square foot facility that will be able to treat over 36,000 patients. We'll have 21 private rooms. Again, you deserve that. Out of those private rooms, we're actually going to outfit two treatment rooms for our pediatric patients, as we treated Commissioner Banther's lovely daughters. We didn't have those. But we will have two rooms that were outfitted, designed specifically for our pediatric patients, with technology that allows them to have an experience that's much more conducive and really creating a much more calm environment, because it's a scary environment, even for us adults sometimes. But it really will be an excellent area that will provide that lovely care for our pediatric And this is what it will look like. The pediatric patient is, that room is actually on the right, and it's actually technology that changes the scenes on the, actually on the wall, and it's based on the patient's choice of what they'd like to see. On the left, that's actually what the inside might look like. And in the bottom, there's a lobby area, patient room. That actually is the current Palm Harbor ER, and it'll be the same footprint. In the very right-hand corner, there is actually a trauma room. And so, again, we're very excited to provide a wonderful new emergency department for Tarpon Springs. But really, it's all about our patients. And this is Keith Nelson, and he is the principal of New Port Ritchie Adventist School. And he actually, again, it says life is faith. And our mission, being a faith-based hospital, is really, really important to us. It's to extend the healing ministry of Christ. Whatever someone's belief system, we really want to extend that love to whomever walks in our door. That is our sacred work. And Keith came to our emergency department after going to two other emergency departments, and we were able to diagnose and provide the correct treatment and help save his life. And that's the kind of care that we're really very honored to provide our community. And I'd like to give Robin a chance to provide an update on how we are doing so far with our foundation capital campaign.
Thank you. As you can see, we're in good hands with this CEO, President, running our hospital. So life is love. Life is family. Life is faith, and life is passion. As of today, thank you, we've, the Florida Hospital Foundation and you have raised over $2 million toward our goal. So thank you very much. And those of you that have not blocked my phone number, I'll probably still be calling to support the, the foundation. This is where I go off script, and they still keep me on here. We, kind of back to what Mayor Proto said, we are so blessed in this community. We have within our community, within two miles, a museum. We have a college, and we have a hospital. And we have a hospital that is providing quality care and extending the healing hands of ministry. We didn't have that before. We had a hospital, we have a hospital that has the support of the Adventist Health System. That's exciting to me as an educator, as someone who wants our economy to grow. When people move to our area, they say, hmm, what's the... When people move to our area, they say, hmm, what's the school system like? Hmm, do they have quality healthcare? Do they have a nearby hospital? Hmm, what's the opportunities I have for culture? We have it all here in our community. And that's what gets me excited. That's what gets, that's, hopefully that's what gets you all excited. So I ask you to continue to support the hospital and continue to support the North Florida, the North Florida Hospital Foundation as they go forward with this Capitol Campaign. And thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to update. And I was remiss to, to let you know that Commissioner Banther is also on our Capitol Campaign Committee and has opened a few doors for us as far as donations. So thank you, Commissioner Banther. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wykel, thank you for the presentation. Ms. Williams, thank you for the presentation. And Ms. Wykel, I want to thank you for your contributions to the education, the Pinellas County Schools and for teaching my son.
Thank you. I did.
In the elementary school.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, publicly, I would like to thank you and to congratulate you for the Florida Hospital of North Pinellas for opening the state-of-the-art full-service ER in Palm Harbor. It's a great place. I had the opportunity to visit that. But I'm looking forward to see the completion of the art in Tarpon Springs. I'm sure it's going to be just as good, even better. And thank you for everything you do. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Panther.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for that, for that update. I felt that it was important for us because the city did have an investment in this. This is a city-owned property, which I don't think is widely known enough. And the citizens have, have, have invested themselves in, in, in this property with their, with their tax dollars by what we did with freezing the lease. And I, I said it before, I, I consider the hospital, even though the, the operations are private, as part of our full-service city model. And what, and what, what Robin said is true. It's very unique that we have a hospital of this quality in a community of, of, of our size. And I think, like, from my perspective, and unfortunately, everybody in, in, in my family has, 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 has experienced the ER. It's always been quality care and it's going to be even better with it, with, with this new facility. And somebody with, you know, daughters who I'm sure, but that won't be their last visit, hopefully not for that, for that reason again. And, you know, aging parents and an aging grandmother here, it is very important for me to have a hospital nearby that, that's, that's, that's quality because seconds do mean life instead of having to go down to Palm Harbor. So I'm very thankful for, for, for what the, the hospital does, not, not, not only in healthcare, but the economic drivers that it brings to, to, to Tarpon Springs for doctors and all the way down to restaurants where people, you know, have to eat lunch. So thank you again and I, I, I look forward to the groundbreaking and for hopefully soon, when we actually, you know, open it up. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Silver.
Yes. Thank you, Tricia and Robin, for the update. I agree with everything Vice Mayor and the mayor said. Not only are these impressive awards and you've done so much to, to make a change here in Tarpon Springs, but you're also a community partner, partnering with the city, with Leepa Ratner. And your sponsorships and your involvement are very important to our community. So I wanted to add that I appreciate that as well. And I am looking forward to the new emergency room. It's going to be a great addition to our city and thank you for all your work. I was glad to be on the board when we did decide to freeze the lease and, and I'm happy that you're almost there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr.
I just echo a lot of the comments that I already said. So thank you all for your work and what you're doing in the community.
Are there any commission, are there any public comments on this item?
Oh, I have to speak, Chris.
Of course.
Charlie. Charles Samarcus, eleven ten South Florida Avenue, Tarpon Springs, Florida. I am chairman of the foundation. I want to echo the thanks, though, for the community members, the board that helped pass this when we first came to the board, when Bruce Bergman was CEO, the support from everyone in the community, but the continued support of all the commissioners and the members of our community. I saw Annie on our board. I saw Pastor, who served on one of our boards back there, to help in the community assessment. The hospital, I'm so impressed because I grew up here and my joke when I first was, when they asked me to join the board was, yeah, I used to say to my wife, if I'm ever hurt, just take me straight to Dobie's and save on the ER charge. But seeing what happened with Florida Hospital when the Adventists took over and how they have committed, I mean, millions of dollars, healthcare when people can't afford it, they do it. And it is all done with a level of professionalism and excellence that really isn't matched with anybody. And I served on a board at Morton Plant in Clearwater. So Tricia has come along and continued the excellence. Terry Smith, who's our foundation director, does an excellent job. And Robin's doing well. But it's really the members of the community that are supporting it. So we're appreciative of all that you all are doing. We ask for your continued support and we look forward to giving everybody a hard hat for the groundbreaking that will hopefully happen soon. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Here now, thank you very much. We are now going to the consent agenda, item number three. Aid should read July eleventh, two thousand seventeen, the regular session. B is July twenty-fifth, regular session. Number four is satisfaction and release of liens. Number five is the attorney fees invoice fifty-four, five sixty-three. Number six is special events. A Labor Day Arts and Crafts on September second through the fourth, two thousand seventeen. B is a trithel on September ninth, two thousand seventeen. C is back-to-school bash, September sixteen, two thousand seventeen. Number seven is authorized execution of emergency medical services. First responder agreement. And number eight is increased file number fifteen zero zero eighteen, water and wastewater supplies. Number nine is a meant file number sixteen zero zero sixteen, Dell Computers through Florida State Contract, which is forty-three, twenty-one, fifteen zero zero. Number ten is cancel file, file number fifteen zero one thirty-nine, printers and multifunction. Number eleven is the award file number seventeen zero one sixty-five, Managed Print Solutions through National Internet Government Purchasing Alliance, contract number R fifty-two forty-two. Number twelve is the award file number seventeen zero one sixty-six, Rownton Landscape Materials, Pinellas County, contract number one sixty-seven zero three ninety. Number thirteen is the award file number seventeen zero zero eighty-four, Lightning Service Holiday Display. And last one is fourteen, award file number seventeen zero one sixty-three, Technology Solutions with related equipment and accessories through the National Joint Powers Alliance. The contract number is one zero zero sixty-one, four. Are there any items that you'd like to pull?
I've got staff members here to discuss seven and thirteen.
Seven and thirteen. Commissioner Carr, you have another one that you'd like to pull?
No.
Same thing?
I just had a question about fifteen, but when's, when's my turn?
Fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
It's not on there.
Oh, sorry. I jumped ahead.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
I just want to make comment on number seven. Just thank our fire chiefs for their work on that.
Okay.
Get it, get it, get it. No, getting it more, more.
Let's leave, okay, good. Let's let the chief talk first.
Yeah, there's, there's some questions. This thing is, we've had, I don't want to say how many rewrites of it before we got out, but it's really a, a, a contract that you've seen a lot of times before. I know it's big and, and a lot of volumes and a lot of paper to it and stuff, but I just wanted the chief to just real highlight what the differences are.
And I agree with you. I had, I read it, the draft, and then I had to go back and ask, what's the highlights on that?
Okay, I did send out a little bullet point, just the financial aspects of it. Do you have questions on the financial aspects?
It was very helpful.
Thank you. There is one addition to that, which I didn't get in there, was the, the, the financial support we're getting for our, our boat. We're getting, what is it, ten thousand dollars upfront and then whatever help we can squeeze out of the county from there. So you can add another ten thousand dollars minimum to that, to that figure. Aside from the financial aspects, which I laid out bullet points for you, it's essentially a, a two-year deal to stay the way it is. And the reason it's two years is because the, the, because of the homestead exemption coming up, that we don't know what the effect is going to be. Overall contract is five years. It's been vetted through all of the city attorneys. I'm sure our attorney has had his eyes on it several times, as well as the Florida, or the Pinellas Fire Chiefs and everyone else involved. It's a very fair deal. It, it's very, the reason that it kept going back and forth was because of the minutia involved in some of the items. Some of the new things that are in there that weren't before has to deal with the continuing medical education, the CMEs, which is why we're going to a full-time EMS coordinator. We're teaching that in-house and they had to add articles within the contract to talk about how that's going to be taught, how we're going to be reimbursed by the time, because of the time spent, the county will be paying us for time spent for us teaching our own people, which is an additional money for us. Aside from that, it's the standard equipment they're going to be providing and all the standards that we have to maintain, as well as insurances and things like that. Anything I can answer specifically?
One question. If you just clarify, how are we going to be reimbursed on the continuing medical, medical education?
Every time, I think there's, what is it, four times a year that we teach in-house? Four times a year that when we teach in-house, there's logs kept with our instructors and the amount of time that, that they spend teaching. We are reimbursed that individual's time if he comes in off duty. We have to pay him overtime. We're reimbursed dollar for dollar. If we have to backfill because he's on duty and we have to remove him, take him offline and put him in, we're reimbursed that as well. So there, there are logs kept. It's run through finance. Ron has seen the spreadsheets a couple of times already. So there is a system in place to fully account for that time and money.
And this is in addition to a hundred percent that we're going to get?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr, you have a question?
No, I just thought.
Okay. Any other question?
No, my, my was just, was just an accolade to say thank you.
Of course, you have something else.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to remind you about the boat money, too. I did forget to put that in the bullet.
Well, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number thirteen?
Yeah, Tom's going to come forward, our Christmas light guru.
Good evening, Tom Funchen, Public Works Director. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Kind of go just, just a quick background of how we came to this and, and I forget how many years it's been.
Yeah, actually, the first year we actually did leasing of the lights was two thousand and eight. And the reason why that came up was that the, the past Christmas decorations were in pretty bad disrepair. They were falling apart. Took a lot of labor to put them in. So we went out to price on, replace the existing, what we originally had, which was quite expensive. It was a little over ten thousand dollars. And that was in two thousand and eight, plus labor of putting them up, taking them down. It's extremely costly and time-consuming to do the, the Christmas lights. So in two thousand and eight, we went into a lease program. We started off at about eighteen thousand dollars a year. And as the years went along, it started increasing basically because, because of demand. Like, we hadn't, part of that, we had no lights down to Decanese. We had some ribbons down there, but not much. Displays that we had down at Craig Park were in, were in disrepair. And of course, once they saw the new lights go up on Tarpon Avenue, it started moving along. Right about now, if we took what we have out there now and, and do the same thing we did last year, the cost to purchase all those decorations we have now would be about seventy-five thousand dollars. Quite expensive. The cost of putting these up, if I was to do, do it in-house, would run me about twelve thousand dollars because all the lighting has to go up at night. Has to go up at night because we'd be on overtime. It would take approximately four men, eight hours a day, about four or five days to put them up and about the same time to take them down. Once you take all the lights down, you also have to store them, which we don't have an area to store them. And you'd need about twelve hundred square foot area to store them. And then you've got to do the maintenance repairs on the lights. If you've ever done Christmas lights, how many times out there trying to fix light bulbs and bulbs and everything else over here? And we're talking, you know, thousands of pieces altogether. That would run us about twenty-five hundred dollars. And then, of course, if you took the cost of the seventy-five thousand dollars to purchase lights and you, and you priced out over fifteen years, that total cost would run about thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. And that's just for putting Christmas lights up every year. The other thing advantage we have here is the opportunity is to change out styles we have. If we decide we don't want candy canes or soldiers, whatever, we can go back every year and change that up and work on the menu. This works on the menu, menu type of thing. We've added Christmas, of course, the trees downtown. And the other things we don't delight, we don't take into account here is that we have a limited time we can put decorations up. I have to have them up before Thanksgiving and they have to be down. They've been by the church for the epiphany prior to January sixth. That time, if I was to thank my personnel and do all that work, whatever projects we have in-house, we'd definitely have to sit and wait all those, all that time to get done. It would actually cost, add cost effect onto other products we have in-house. We do do some Christmas decorations. We do about maybe ten percent around the study, but I'd say most of this coverage is about ninety percent.
And again, a lot of it was, again, when we budget eighteen thousand, people liked them so much, they wanted more. They wanted bigger Christmas tree, especially the docks. They wanted a bigger Christmas tree. So it's really expanded. We really got control. If you see on your dais, I think you've all got a list of identified the ones, it's probably about thirty thousand dollars worth that we've identified to put up. We're asking in this for up to thirty-five in case there's anything we need to add. But we have control of this. We could take it down to twenty-five, twenty. But it seems every year with the accolades we get, we haven't wanted to go down in the standards of lights. We've, we've done the increasing. So I think we've hit a good point at the somewhere between thirty and thirty-five. And again, we got control. We can, we could go lower and stuff, but, you know, we've got a decent plan here and of what has been successful and what we get the accolades for every year.
And when we do have issues at night, we don't have to send out a crew to go out and fix them. They do repair them that night. They're very good at repairing. We had the lights go down at Craig Park last year and they were there next night and had them fixed. That would take me a couple of guys, a couple of hours overtime. And they don't do professionally, so they're not going to do as quickly as, as the pros do it.
Sir.
Every year, especially last year, we got a lot of compliments for the lights. We still encourage. Everybody liked them. The only question that I got, if it's possible to leave the decorations down at the Sponge Dog and remove it after the epiphany?
Yes, that can be done, yes.
Thank you.
No problem.
Are you saying after?
After, yeah.
Okay, just remember, you have two groups. You got those that want them down before the epiphany.
Yes.
And you got those that, we'll do it.
This is, this is the request that I got.
Okay, we'll, we'll do it anyway you say, but just realize over the years, we've been chastised for not taking them down by epiphany because the religious observers want them down and there's those that go the other way. Whatever this board wishes, just tell me and, and, and we will do. But we, we've got people on both sides that are arguing of wanting them out of there by epiphany or wanting them to still stay there. So we'll, we'll do the wishes of the board.
I, I think it's good if we leave it after the epiphany, if everybody agrees with that.
Is that the docks or Tarpon Avenue and leading down to throwing the cross?
That's the people that I got there from the docks.
But I'm talking about which.
The other one down at the Sponge Dog.
Because I'm not sure we can do it, they come with a crew and take them all down or, and then we need to do all or, we'd have to do all, they mobilize a crew. If you see the crew that comes in and sweeps them.
I will, I will call and get a price to see if there's a difference in the cost of changing the scheduling on to it.
Okay.
And we'll bring that back to you.
I can bring it back to you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any commission comments? Commissioner Silver?
Well, I just want to thank you. We didn't have any decorations on the docks for years. So we, we definitely appreciate it. And I have heard the same thing, that they do want the decorations up through epiphany because most, most of the people in that area keep their Christmas decorations up. So I just wanted to mention that, too. But thanks for everything you do.
You're welcome.
Yeah, this is a nice hefty bill, I believe, but I think it's an important part of being this small of a community and a community feel it's great to have the Christmas decorations. I think it's a very important part. But also, we've got over twenty-seven churches, I think, in our community. We've got a very, tonight, it was said multiple times, we're a religious community. There's multiple things that have been brought up. Prayer was opened up in our, before our meeting started. Why aren't we seeing more Christmas items involved instead of just seeing a stocking or a Christmas tree? I think from this standpoint, it would be nice to see some other elements involved around the community. And I understand there's other religions that are out there as well that might need to be represented, but from a Christmas standpoint, where we're renting these items from the Christmas people, Christmas, it's not Santa-mas, that something should be reflective of our faith in the, what's going on in our community as a whole. So that's one of the reasons why I wanted to bring this up and discuss it amongst the board because this is the item we're talking about, candy canes, we're talking about, growing up, I remember walking or driving in my parents' car and there'd be crosses down Tarpin Avenue, lit up and on their light poles along with other, like a nutcracker of some sort, I think Mayor Protus could remember that. So, that's where I wanted to discuss and have this as a discussion, to bring and pull this, to look at it, say, why aren't we, why are we missing, what actually is going on here? We're just having these facade of decorations, but we're really missing the season. So, is there anything that's holding us back from putting anything else?
Basically, the city, you want to remain non-secular because you don't want to spend money in your budget and stuff for the city attorney to be defending you. And that's basically, we can get with you and we get the city attorney with you, but you do not want to end up in court.
What if you use, I mean, no, I mean, we're worshiping, it would be a worship of Santa Claus or candy canes or the Christmas tree. I mean, it's something that, as this, it's, it's showing that you're acknowledging something for Christmas.
We can get the city attorney to send you the rulings and stuff that may convince you otherwise. If you're like mayor, I can get those.
Yeah, if you would please send it to everybody.
Okay.
Thank you very much, yeah, thank. Any, any other question?
Thanks, Tom.
Any other question? Are there any public comments on this item?
Again, Anita Protus, 901 Bay Shore Drive. The biggest, and our city manager will remember this because he was police chief, the biggest decorations came when I was mayor. Got highly criticized for the money we spent, the next year we didn't do that much, got tremendously criticized for it. It's a time of year of togetherness, friendship, religion, joy. I would like to see us do a little more in the bayou area and I know they come and steal things, but we have a beautiful point to make it around for Christmas. I'd like to see the city come out a little bit more for Christmas. I wish we could have a program where you turn on the lights the day after Thanksgiving in the evening, the mayor could put the plug in for us and all the lights come on, that would be beautiful. To bring the community out, I would like to see the city have a church community program where our beautiful choirs would be there to sing. I saw this in Savannah, Georgia, it was magnificent, magnificent and it brings the season, it helps our two business districts in the community, it shows unity. So, you may not have time to do it this year, but it's something to think about next year. It is a profound effect on the communities. See, I travel too much with historic stuff, that's my problem and I am historic now at my age, but the thing is, these are things you can do in your community, mayor, and make the community known and understood and do leave them up. We did get criticized for the gold cross at the steps of the bayou, but we stood strong on that because it's a heavy significance in this community. I had been up here many times asking for election reform so we don't have all the campaign signs strung among our Christmas decorations. That's the other thing I want to come up. I've left it alone, waiting to see how far y'all we go. Dunedin, St. Pete. All the smaller communities within Pinellas County have gone to Tallahassee and they've done the reforms so we don't trash our community ever again with epiphany and Christmas with signs all over. Please take that into consideration, we need to do that. And I would like to see our Christmas parade, I was told by the chamber three years ago that the Tarpon Springs Chamber is a chamber of businesses, not of the community. We need to try to get the Shriners back here, I don't know what happened, but I think if the mayor and the city manager and the commissioners went to the Shriners headquarters with the letter, we could get the Shriners back here. It was wonderful for the older adults, for the children, I enjoyed it. Instead of seeing big trucks and trailers going up and down Main Street, that's not Christmas. We need to have more of a Christmas program and parade with all of this in it. And another thing, it's too late now and the city manager's going to choke me when he sees me in the parking lot, bring back the Halloween program on Main Street for the families. A lot of money was made, yes, it's worked, but it brought the people in the community out with their children and I've been asking if we could do it with Rotary, you know, to get an interest, but when, see, he's making faces at me already.
That's my, that was my favorite event. That was my favorite event.
It's the best thing for the community, it gives the people something from the city and you do make a lot of money off of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Last year, we had the Christmas, Christmas tree ceremony, we plan to have it again this year, thank you. Any other public comments?
My name is Rodney Hardy, 304 South Distant Avenue. I appreciate Commissioner Carr for what he said about the Christmas decorations, I mean, Christmas is about Christ. Candy cane, Santa Claus, that's, I mean, that's secular stuff, but Christmas is about the birth of Christ and we need to get back to Christ. This country is getting so far away from God, it's that, that we need to get back. That would bring unity amongst the nation, I think, so that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on this item? Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. And roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number 15. The award bid number 170143, Ring Avenue Parking Lot and Brick Pavement. Rehabilitation from Lemon Street to Tarpin Avenue. Mr. LaCurse?
Basically, this is on consent, obviously, because of the cost, this is a project we've been talking and working on, what it seems like forever. Tom Function has been involved in the process from the start, so the bids are in, we've got a good bid that we've got the money budgeted for to do that project, which is not only the additional parking lot for the expanded need for downtown, especially our downtown towards Ring Street area, but also the road there. So, as I said, Tom's been involved with, with this from, from the beginning, so any questions, the bid's there, we've got the money to do it, so we want your approval on the bid.
Yeah, well, thank you. I'm sure we're all in favor for it, but I got, I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask.
Right ahead.
According to the backup information, you'll be, the project will be completed in four months.
Approximately 20 days.
About four months, that's not going to interfere with a lot, with the area businesses, are they?
No, actually, part of the contractor is to make sure that the contractor keeps the area businesses open and operational. There may be some inconvenience here or there, maybe for a short time, but for the most part, you know.
Work with the businesses, make sure.
Work with the businesses, yes, sir.
Thank you. The pipes under the Ring Avenue, are they going to be replaced, the infrastructure under the road?
Yes, sir.
It will be?
One line's going to be replaced, yes.
Yeah. Do we have any plans to place any irrigation system for the landscaping?
Yes, there will be, yes, sir.
Thank you. I guess it was not part of the?
It should have been, I apologize over that.
All right, thank. Commissioner Seaver?
Yeah, we're all looking forward to this project, obviously. I was just wondering if any of it's going to be done in-house or is it only this bid that, you know?
No, this will be done completely by the contractor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
This is an area that needs parking terribly and this is a great relief, I think, to the businesses and the surrounding areas. So, this is a really good encouraging thing to hear, that this is going to be done by the end of the year. So, if you could send, mark the designs, because I'd like to see what some of the designs look like for landscaping and lighting in the area.
Sure.
I know, so pedestrian-wise, is there going to be additional crosswalks at all in this area from the parking lot across the streets or how is anything?
There'll be the typical crosswalks at the end of both sections of, by Lemon and also on Tarpin Ave, there will be sidewalks, of course, on both sides of Ring Ave and there will be an interior sidewalk where people will be able to walk from, you know, the east side of the parking lot through the parking lot, meander either to Lemon Street and/or Tarpin Ave within the parking lot and then, of course, back on to Ring Avenue, so there's plenty of walking there.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, the chair wants to attain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. Item number 16 is to authorize execution of a contract for purchase of property located at 425 Penn Street. Mr. LaCurse, you'll do the presentation.
Again, this is coming for you, this is our efforts that we're working on to the east of City Hall with the drainage problems from here, Gross, Distant, this piece of land, we're working on, Tom, if you want to tell them about this land and what area that's going to help us with retention?
Sure. This is all part of the stormwater action planning, number five for the Gross Avenue section. One of the things we need to do is water quality, water retention and this availability on the piece of property now, we originally, I think, back in 2007, 2008 purchased one of the other properties at the corner of Penn Street. This is the first house in, there's actually a couple of homes in there, we attempted to purchase the other one, but we can't get through that one. But the first one there has been in disrepair, it's had a lot of flooding problems, many times it had heavy rains, we've pumped it out and the gentleman's come to the city here to offer to purchase the property, which will then give us the opportunity to expand the plan, the retention pond we need to put on the property, which will help with water quality and with the flooding in the whole area. So, it's a, a needed piece of property.
Any commission comment, question?
Where's this funded from and just has an account number listed, you know?
Stormwater.
Stormwater, yeah, thanks.
Any public comments on this item? Here now, roll call, please.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, that would be good. We got first and second? Now, roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. We are now going to item number 17, which is the resolution 2017-28, the application 1736, Tarpon Springs Aquarium Site Plan. This is a quasi-traditional, the city attorney will read the title, will explain the quasi, quasi-traditional process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is quasi-traditional as well as number 18B concerning the rezoning on Pinellas Avenue and item number 19, which is the vacation of the right-of-way. So, I would ask anyone in the audience who is here for those, those items to please be sworn at the appropriate time. These hearings are quasi-traditional proceedings where the commission acts in a quasi-traditional rather than a legislative capacity. At such a hearing, it is not the commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law, it has already been established. In a quasi-traditional hearing, the commissioners are required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented and apply those findings to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application. The commission may only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial and relevant to the issues. If that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established by the code, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial and relevant evidence demonstrate that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath, all persons testifying must give their name and address for the record, all testimony and questioning must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. City staff will present its testimony and evidence, the applicant will then have an opportunity to cross-examine staff. The applicant will then present its testimony to witnesses. Members of the public opposing the application will be given an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public speaking in opposition to the application have concluded, members of the public in support will have an opportunity to present testimony. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes. The applicant will have an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary, after which city staff will be given an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary. Following this, the commission will consider the matter, commissioners may ask questions of witnesses, a motion will be made and a vote will be taken. At this juncture, I would ask for the board to disclose any ex parte communications on item 17, 18B or 19. Seeing none, I'd ask those who intend to testify on items 18B, excuse me, 17, 18B and 19 to please stand and be sworn. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony given in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. With that, we'll turn to item 17, resolution 2017-28. A resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida approving application number 17-36 for site plan approval for the Tarpon Springs Aquarium to construct a 4,866 square foot area, including display tanks, theater and gift shop located .40 miles north of the intersection of Dixie Highway and North Pinellas Avenue, providing for findings, providing for a certificate of concurrence, providing for conditions and providing an effective date, that's resolution 2017-28 by Titleoni.
Thank you, Heather Earl, city staff for this application. Essentially, this is the existing Tarpon Aquarium that's located on the Sponge Docks, they're looking to actually develop a new site north of Dixie Highway, at the intersection of Dixie Highway and Alternate 19 and essentially, the location is for roughly about 4,000, almost 5,000 square feet of area that they're going to cover. They essentially are going to have an outside, open-air type aquarium where there'll be tanks and display area, but there is no full-on structure here where we're dealing with a larger building. There's a small building in the center of the property, which is where the gift shop and the restrooms will be and then there is associated parking and a theater area. So, it's really going to be a sunny day facility, a little bit different than the facility that they currently have. With that, the applicant for this is, again, Scott Conjure with the Tarpon Aquarium and this is essentially a project that's worked through several different issues here. Originally, the tract B, which is the lower part of the property, you approved a restrictive covenant removal on that property several months ago. That essentially allowed for them to use portions of that property that they currently wouldn't have been allowed to use because no development was allowed before to that restrictive covenant being removed. So, they've had kind of an uphill battle with that. Since then, we've worked through a lot of the site planning issues to address wetlands, there's a lot of wetlands on this property, to address their drainage system, because again, it's a long, narrow property, how do you make that drainage system work there? The applicant has worked diligently with both Swift Mud, our stormwater engineers and their other partners at the state with agencies on a variety of issues, including stormwater, including what they're going to do with their wastewater to manage their wastewater from the back filtration system and how to manage, how to manage that at that site. So, with that, the staff has, at this point, worked with them, there is no land use changes requested here, they have a site plan that's consistent with the Land Development Code, it's consistent with your comprehensive plan, they've met the criteria for your concurrency management system and based on that, staff is recommending approval of this application. Planning and zoning board heard this application yet last night and the unanimous after discussion unanimously approved the application moving forward with this conditions that I'm going to read now into the record. The developer is responsible for acquiring all jurisdictional permits or approvals and for meeting the minimum criteria of the Land Development Code, the applicant must mitigate for tree removal at the time of permitting pursuant to LDC Section 1, 33.06. Any lighting to be installed on-site is to be shielded and directed internal to the site. Construction plan shall be consistent with the approved site plan, the payment of all requisite fees, a tenant to the project shall be paid in accordance with the Land Development Code. This site plan shall expire within one year of the effective date unless the application has been filed for a building permit with a construction plan signed and sealed by a registered engineer licensed in the state of Florida. And I could answer any additional questions you have, this is a fairly small project in comparison that we usually see in site planning.
I've got a question. This is, I think, one of the first projects that I've seen with a non-paved and a non-retention pond project. So, can you explain to me a little bit about the silt and the item, like the dust that goes into the drainage and then goes to, I mean, is there a filtration system under there that filters that out and then dumps it out into the wetlands?
We have the applicant's engineer here who can kind of talk about the stormwater project and give you a little bit specifics, but the layman's terms, what it is, is that porous surface on, on top, that concrete surface allows for preliminary treatment of anything that, any stormwater that's there and then there's lower levels of treatment with a fabric around their drainage piping system that then will pipe that water out of the underlying area. So, the idea is to allow for some percolation, but there is a larger system here because of the fact that they're basically submerging their pond underneath their circulation in their parking area. I mean, it's basically what's considered like a vaulted system, only this is a little different, it's not a big concrete bunker that you usually think of when you're dealing with a vault, it's a, it's a little bit more of a proactive green approach really to managing stormwater on the site and that was really the intention of this project is to fit into that old floor world environment to allow for those really nice wetlands to be part to allow for those really nice wetlands to be part of the larger experience. They're creating that destination feel, which is not what they currently have right now. Their destination feel is they're on the docks. So they really have thought about, you know, the fact that, you know, we're moving the aquarium. We really need to create that destination because we don't have that anymore when they leave. So it was really a great, a great idea. But if you have specific questions for the stormwater engineer, he's available, and I'm sure he can go over that in detail. He did with planning and zoning board last night, so.
I would like to see a little more information on, I think, and do you know where the outflow is going? Or does it just go straight into the ground from below the parking lot?
Again, he can talk about exactly how it meanders down the side of the property through the piping system to the outflow structures towards the street.
I had a question about the trees. I was trying to find, and it was just difficult to read some of these. So I was trying to understand, how many trees are actually being removed, do you know?
The trees are shown on the, on the actual survey, which should be the first thing, what the removal is. I don't know that it actually has the number in there at this time. Again, you're dealing with a very preliminary design at this point. They still have to go out there and field-verify everything. Again, you're dealing with a wooded site, so they're going to have to go out there and probably grub and field to actually get all of the trees delineated. So that's a preliminary approval of what they're actually going to be removing. And that's why we put the condition on that they are required to meet, go through our permitting process.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions?
Anyone else?
I just had a comment, just a comment. Yes. We're going to miss Scott being on the Sponge Docks for sure, but I know that you're very interested in environment and doing environmentally the right thing and fitting into the environment. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into doing that. Thank you.
Does the applicant wish to present to the board this evening? I think there are some questions relative to stormwater.
My name is Scott Conjure from the Tarpon Springs Aquarium, which is eight fifty Doe Decanese Boulevard. I live at fifty forty-eight South Shore Drive, Newport, Ritchie.
Sure. Before we ask questions of the commissioner, let me just ask if the applicant is in agreement with the conditions set forth by staff?
Yes, I, you know, what she was telling is what, you know, basically, the engineers have kind of come up and designed, you know, for this project, so, and, so, yeah, I'd like to move forward.
All right, I think the board has some questions for you.
Yes, I have a couple of questions to ask you, sir. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you for selecting the area to move your project to. And yes, we're going to miss you down at the dock. I think it was a great attraction. It brings people to the area, and I'm sure you're going to do the same thing in that area. The question I'd like to ask you is, what kind of a filtration system are you going to use to circulate the water for the tanks and the output? Is that going into the, to the welllands, into the river eventually? Or are you going to keep it on-site?
Well, our plans are, initially, we are going to put the water into a tank. And Swift Mud has allowed us to truck this water to an off-site location. There's actually some property I own in Hudson. We have an abandoned aquaculture facility. There's ponds there, which are, so the water would percolate down. It's right along the coast. And what we're trying to do is, we're trying to, for a more permanent solution, is to run the water into the city sewer system. But they want to do, they want to check the aquarium and what we're discharging right now and kind of to see if that's, you know, feasibility or whatever. So, so that's something we're working towards, is hopefully a more permanent solution rather than having to take this water out. Now, we go through about two hundred gallons, or about a hundred gallons a day on average. It's not every day we do it, a couple of times a week, but about a hundred gallons a day is that we discharge.
Are you using freshwater or saltwater?
It's saltwater.
Saltwater?
Yeah. Currently, at a location where we're at now, we just pipe the water right in the river at high tide. And be it a tidal flow river, you know, high tide to kind of get water flowing in from the Gulf. And then a low tide, it goes out. So at low tides, particularly during the rainy season, it's pretty much freshwater. But a high tide, then the Gulf water comes up in there, and we're able to use that as our source of saltwater. But it varies in its quality. We've had issues, you know, in the past with, you know, working with that water in the river because we get a lot of rain. There's not much salt in it, is the bottom line. But it's, they're all marine exhibits, so it's all saltwater exhibits.
Thank you, that's all I have.
I've got a couple of questions. What type of permit is required? Or is there a permit that we're required to house these marine animals?
There's, that's through FWC as far as the permitting, as far as keeping the animals. And they have what they call special activity permits and for collecting, you know, local specimens and things like that. So that's all done through FWC as far as, you know, the keeping of the animals. And also, we have reptiles. We have alligators and pythons. And then, once again, that's all licensed through FWC. And they inspect the facility a couple of times a year. It has to be done according to their codes.
What, what type of fence is going around the property to protect trespassers from jumping in the tanks?
Our plans right now, on the, on the parking lot side, to put like PVC fence, something that's, you know, not too bad to look at. And then probably the backside is going to be a, like a chain link fence to go around the backside to keep trespassers from wandering into the exhibit areas.
Okay. Yeah, it's all coated chain link fence on here somewhere, but I just didn't, just wanted to clarify that was the case.
Right.
Couple more questions here. So this is just going to be all open air, where you could just walk up to the tanks, or you have a fence around them, so you could collect your payment or mission or something?
Now, we may put some kind of covers over the top to protect them from the sun, that type of thing. And we're not sure, we haven't decided exactly what we're going to do to cover the tanks. But they're going to need to be covered from the sun because of the heat, you know, the hot sun. So it might be like a bath roof type, maybe, hot light thing or something of that nature over the actual exhibits. But the rest of it's going to be, you know, basically walking around, kind of like a zoo, where you walk through down the paths and stuff around.
Is this like transparency all the way around the tank, or is like part of it windows and stuff?
A lot of our exhibits are going to be like touch tanks and things like that, or shallow with stingrays and things like that. So where you just, you know, you see, view them through the surface.
Okay.
We're going to have a lot, our plans right now have two large tanks. And they will have viewing panels in them so that you can view them from the, you know, from the sides of the tank. And so you can see the fish that way. But also, we're going to allow people to access it up top and view them from the top as well in the main aquariums there.
What happens, like, if a tree falls on one of the tanks? Are there going to be trees within the range? Because I would imagine if a tree falls in a tank and then it busts and you've got...
Any, any trees that are with, you know, I feel like that, you know, are going to be a threat, you know, in regard to falling. You know, we're, we're going to have to remove the tree, is the bottom line. Because if the tree were to fall on them, you know, it'd be catastrophic in a sense, I mean.
An aspect of a hurricane comes in and then something happens and an alligator, python gets out and runs around. Okay. Bus turnaround, are you guys anticipating, like, any buses coming in for schools or anything? Because it didn't seem like there's a whole lot of space for buses to come in and park.
Right, we have the long parking lot, and then we have the emergency, I don't know, the emergency exit going down through, you know, the backside or whatever. But, you know, we do get school groups in there and stuff and, and...
I would just be concerned, I mean, is there enough room for the school bus to back in where the dumpster is? Because that would...
That's what we're looking at.
Okay. Because to have a school bus back out in the alternate team would be a really dangerous situation, I think.
Did you what? Oh, no, they wouldn't want to back out down that road. Yeah, I see what you're saying.
I just want to make sure there's enough room where the dumpster is.
They can back up in that, you know, location.
Okay. And then also, just to finish up with my stormwater questions that I had earlier, just a little more information about how it works, where it's discharging to.
My name is Randy Austin with Land and Marine Associates, civil engineering firm, three one six two two U.S. Nineteen North, Palm Harbor. And the stormwater system basically works as a percolation pre-treatment system through the crushed concrete parking. So there will be some level of treatment through that, I believe it's roughly eighteen inches of crushed concrete. They'll be washed to fines. There's a minimum rock size to help prevent compaction so that we have a minimum void space for the water to go through. Within that, and that system is contained with an impermeable liner to hold the water, similar to a retention pond system. At the bottom of that system, there's a perforated PVC pipe that runs along the parking lot that collects the water. And then that would take it to an underdrain system, which is also wrapped in a permeable liner. And it has, I think, if you look on sheet, you have a set of the plans in the packet, I believe, sheet five. That shows an underdrain detail where there is a sand, a filter material that provides a secondary level of treatment for the water to also wash out any particles, anything like that. It catches that, purify the water, treat the water before it actually gets discharged into a smart box, which overflows then into the adjacent wetland area. But we do treat all the required, minimum required volume prior to release to meet both the city and the state requirements.
So that captures the water even where it connects to the road out in that area also?
Yes, we've actually got, in the right-of-way, there is a, that will drain toward the DOT right-of-way. So there is a small portion of the driveway that will have to grade toward the road in order to make it traversable. But after that area, it does grade back toward this portion of the site and would go into the treatment system in the parking lot.
Okay, so it's not like a traditional where you've got a drain in the parking lot. It just goes right through the parking lot.
Right, it's not actually going to be graded in any particular direction. It's almost going to be a level surface. And will go down in through and be treated at any point in the parking lot. So it doesn't need to be directed to any inlet in any specific, specific location on the parking lot.
No, it's a unique design, so it's cool to see something a little bit different.
There wasn't, there wasn't quite enough room to provide a hard-surface typical parking lot and an additional separate stormwater retention pond. So we tried to do the best we could to combine the two in the limited space available.
Got my question. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
I just want to say, I think this is going to be a neat project to see happen. As Commissioner, you know, Seber said, you are kind of iconic where you are now at the Sponge Docks. But always wondered how you fit an aquarium in a strip center, basically. So that was, that was pretty unique engineering there. So I think it's a great idea of what you're doing. And I think it'll be also more of a destination for people to come. I think you'll get more traffic out of that. And I would just assume that trespassing on your property is a self-correcting problem. You've got pythons and alligators. You know, that's, takes care of itself, you know, probably. Thank you.
Any additional questions from board? Anything additional the applicant would like the board to know?
Uh, no.
Thank you much. Heather, any questions for the applicant?
No.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in support of the application? Seeing none, does the applicant wish to make a closing statement of any kind?
No, I guess, no.
Staff? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Are there any addition commission common? Here, none. The chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Can I make a quick comment, Mayor? I think this is a great opportunity to see our city expand more to the north of the river and for the aquarium to go that direction. So I'm excited to see any other potential growth that direction towards the aquarium. So I think it's an encouraging thing to see in the community. So thank you for what you guys are doing and good luck with your endeavors.
Thank you, guys. We're now going to the item number eighteen. This is the application seventeen dash fifteen, land use and rezoning at the southeast corner of Mears Boulevard and Alternate Nineteen on Pinellas Avenue. Mr. Wykel, the ordinance two thousand seventeen dash thirteen, amended future land use. This is a second reading.
Are they going to do these together?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if we're going to do, we're going to do B as well? Okay, two thousand seventeen dash fourteen. All right, ordinance two thousand seventeen dash thirteen, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, admitting the future land use map for approximately zero point seven acres of property located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Alternate Nineteen South and Mears Boulevard. App seventeen dash fifteen from ROG Residential Office General to CL Commercial Limited. Providing for findings and providing an effective date, second reading of ordinance two thousand seventeen dash thirteen by title only. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on March three, two thousand seventeen, and August four, two thousand seventeen. Ordinance two thousand seventeen dash fourteen, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, admitting the official zoning map of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida for approximately zero point seven acres of property located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Alternate Nineteen South and Mears Boulevard. App seventeen fifteen, from zoning designation RO Residential Office District to NB Neighborhood Business. Providing for findings and providing an effective date. It's a second reading of ordinance two thousand seventeen dash fourteen by title only. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on March three, two thousand seventeen, and June two, two thousand seventeen. This one is quasi-traditional. On second reading, I would ask for staff and applicant to update the commission as to any changed conditions or additional evidence that it wishes the board to consider. With that, we will hear from staff.
Heather Earwiler, planning and zoning director and staff to this application. The only additional information I have is that the county acted at their June eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen meeting to officially change the county-wide land use from O, which is office, to retail services. So we will be, we will be consistent upon second reading with their map. And that's the only other, I can answer any questions you may have, but that's the only other additional information we have.
Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, is the applicant present and wishing to present to board tonight?
No.
Okay. Are there members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Members of the public wishing to speak in support? Anything further, Heather?
Not at this time.
Mr. Mayor, again, just to remind the board, we'll need a motion and a vote on each ordinance.
Correct.
Please.
I need a motion for the ordinance two thousand seventeen dash thirteen, amended future land use.
Motion, second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. And now I need a motion for the eighteen B, which is the ordinance two thousand seventeen dash fourteen, amended zoning.
Motion to approve, two thousand seventeen dash fourteen.
Second.
Commissioner Carr?
Roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes, thank you. Item number nineteen is the ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty-four, vacate right-of-way of nineteen thousand square feet east of Orange Street between Jasmine Avenue and Sports Complex Cemetery. This is the first reading. This is also quasi-traditional.
Ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, vacating an abandoning right-of-way for nineteen thousand one hundred square feet of east of Orange Street between Jasmine Avenue and Sports Complex, providing for conditions, providing for findings, providing for future easements, providing for recordation of the public records of Pinellas County, and providing an effective date. It's first reading of ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty-four by title only. Second reading to be held on September five, two thousand seventeen. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on August eleven and eighteen, two thousand seventeen. City is applicant, so we will have no one else to hear from, aside from the public, than Ms. Earwiler tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Essentially, this is the cemetery expansion that you agreed to approve along Jasmine Avenue. There, just north of that property, between Jasmine, between the cemetery expansion and the sports complex is an existing right-of-way for Orange Avenue. So Mr. Smith of Public Services had come to me and said, is there any way we can vacate that? And there is no means, it's not the sole means of access for anybody on that property. As a matter of fact, the other properties that are adjacent and actually are on this roadway front on Keystone, they either connect, interconnect with each other because of the nature of the Keystone roadway, or they have their driveway off of that roadway. So you are not eliminating access for anybody or reducing it. So it meets the test of the comprehensive plan in the Land Development Code. And so that staff is recommending approval of the vacation. I can answer any specific questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for staff?
We got a couple. Hey, Heather, in the picture, it has just like a red rectangle, but then it shows additional paper street going to the sports complex?
That's correct.
Is it going all the way, or is it stopping?
The vacay is only adjacent to the city's property because otherwise, we would have to notify everybody else that we want to take this action. And being that you want to start the process to actually work on that expansion project, we want to give you the opportunity to do that. This is one of those things that you need to have happen. So we'll probably be contacting the other neighbors adjacent... So we'll probably be contacting the other neighbors adjacent to this property and moving forward with a vacation on that additional portion. But we didn't want to have them wait with the development because they can move forward on actually developing that property in the meantime while we're working on the rear portion. But you have many roadways where it's just the, the city's only done a portion of the, of the vacated area, mostly because they either need to contact another applicant or adjacent property owner or something like that to get their signature or and/or sign-off approval.
So is this going towards the future cemetery? Is it going towards the sports complex when?
It's going towards the, the sports complex. A matter of fact, north of that is actually the sports complex property. The entrance is north of this location. So, so the, the city, if you look on that map, the city cemetery is there and then just north of that is the city sports complex that's just north and then over adjacent to it.
I know, I'm sorry, the expansion. So is the, is the vacating going towards the expansion of the cemetery or is it going towards the?
It's most likely going to be a combination of both because their talk, the public works and public services are kind of talking about changing some of the dynamics of how the sports complex will interact with that cemetery property. There's some opportunities there to kind of change the entrances and exits. So as a result, they're looking at studying that. So right now, it's connected to the cemetery site, but that doesn't mean it won't necessarily benefit the sports complex as well.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions for staff? Seeing none, are there members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Members of the public wishing to speak in support? Anything else, Heather?
Not at this time.
Thank you. The only comment I'd like to make and is to thank Mr. Smith for being so helpful and explained the whole thing, the, the project to us. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other comments? I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yeah.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. We are now going to the item number twenty, which is the resolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty-nine, salary and classification changes for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. City Attorney will read the resolution.
Resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-nine, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the organization of the public services, police, finance, city commission slash city manager, city clerk and collector, cultural and civic services, public works, fire, planning and zoning departments, including the addition of positions, elimination of positions, reclassification, and regrading of positions and providing for an effective date here above. It's resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-nine by title only.
Thank you. The salaries and the classification changes were discussed during the budget workshop. And I'd like to ask Mr. Licorice to share with us the new information and updates that he has.
Yes, pretty much this document is the same that we went over and discussed at the budget meeting. The only difference is, is as a result of the budget meeting and the positive response about the police position and due to the document you see on the diast that Ron prepared for you, it kind of breaks down the availability of money we have to still use within the budget. At the time, I presented this to you in budget, we had a hundred and forty thousand there. I wasn't quite comfortable yet funding or asking you about funding the police position. But now you see the items so far that Ron's, were up to two hundred thousand, which, which gave me the comfort to, to put this in for tonight and do it. Obviously, at your discretion, we can hold off and wait on the position or we can do it now with the others. I feel comfortable with this. We'll be bringing to you at the September meeting before the, which would be before the public hearings, we'll be, we'll be giving to you the final budget update going into those public hearings. We do expect to maybe have some more money in there. We're saving back some of this money that we have because we don't know the results of the police and fire contract negotiations. We believe now from the discussions and stuff, they're three-year contracts and they may want to front-load some of it in the first year, which will be better for our budget in year two and three as we enter into the age of the new homestead exemption, which would be good for us. Although the bad part is we'll have to have some money set to add to that budget. But as you see, we have that cushion to wait and see. But we will have that update to you. If you see the other page that we gave to you, we've also found funding, we believe, for almost all of the items we gave you on the proposed fundings. You'll see, you'll see them there and you'll see where we got the money to fund them from. We're still at a balanced budget. We still have that money available to plug in. And again, we give you that budget update, but I'm comfortable recommending that to you now that we add the police officer into this. And again, that's the only real addition. What we talked about is that your purview would add an hour later in the budget process.
Thank you. Any commission comment?
This is a hundred and forty-six thousand for these other amounts that can be funded included in that two hundred thousand.
Some of them, as you, as you can see where they come from. For instance, the shade structure, we found money in the, in the recreation impact. That would not come from that. The only ones that would come from this list of two hundred thousand would be the city clerk's office remodel. And I think that's really the only one that would come from that column up there.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mark. And like I said in the budget workshop, I am in support of adding this police position to this, to this budget year. You even mentioned if we had to, you use some reserve funding, but though, as always, you and Ron find ways to make magic and I appreciate that. And I'm glad that we can still maintain a balanced budget and have this position.
I'd echo Vice Mayor Banther in the aspect of, I agree that it would be nice to have this position added to relief on overtime or whatever may be for our police force. So thanks for figuring it out.
Thank you. I'm sure Chief Coates is happy about that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Licorice, I appreciate you looking into this and come up with funding for it. I think it's good to do that.
And Ron, Ron Harrington is here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ron. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none. Chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Carr? Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yeah.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. And now we're going to item number twenty-one. Appointment to the Budget Advisory Committee. We have been notified that Mr. Louis Pappas has resigned and we need to appoint a person from this list as an alternate one for the, to fill the unexpired term for, which expires on March twentieth, two thousand and twenty. I'd like to bring to your attention a person, Susan Hales. Not only that she completed the citizens academy, but also she has thirty years of experience in finance. So I think she's a very good candidate. Vice Mayor Banther?
I, I agree with, yes, for Susan.
Commissioner Seber?
Those were my exact thoughts.
Oh, yeah?
Susan Hales, yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Same.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? I need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes, thank you. And now we're going to item number twenty-second is to appoint, appointment to the Heritage Preservation Board. We have two options, option one and option two. There are two vacancies. The person that at this time is the current alternate, Mrs. Johnson, has expressed interest to be moved to the regular member position. And there's one of the options. And of course, we need to appoint one as a regular member and one as an alternate member. We start from Commissioner Carr. What, do you want option one and option two?
Option one.
Okay. You want to select for a regular member?
I'm sorry, so option one is to move Carol Johnson as a regular member?
As a regular member, then we need to select.
An alternate member, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I would like to recommend Mrs. Tara Panny for the alternate position. She's got extensive, other, her applicant, she's, her application isn't the oldest that's in this list. She's got extensive history with other cities as a city planner and doing some other aspects. So I think she would be a good resource for our board. I sat on the board with her at the time when I was in the Heritage Preservation Board and she had a lot of knowledge about historical preservation.
And who do you recommend for regular member?
I thought that was Carol Johnson.
There's another one.
Okay, I'm sorry. I would recommend Mrs. Tara Panny.
I'm sure that you understood what you said, that you want Ms. Tara Panny to be the alternate member or the regular member?
To be the regular member.
Okay.
And the alternate member was going to be misplaced on. It was Patricia Cornell? Cornell?
Patricia Cornell, okay. Commissioner Seber?
I agree to move Carol Johnson up from alternate to a regular member. And I would appoint to Koah Bean as, as another regular member because she's been waiting since January of two thousand and sixteen to, and has expressed an interest all this time. And as an alternate, Gabrielle Pace, who has also been waiting. I know Ms. Tara Panny's been on the board before, but just thought new blood would be good.
Alternate Pace is an alternate?
Yes.
Okay. Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes, I'm kind of a combination of Commissioner Carr and Commissioner Seber. I, I like option two, to be honest with you. Usually I am in favor of bringing somebody up that, that, that's in the alternate position. But I believe that this board is, is at a crucial point where they, they need to have more guidance and certain kinds of resumes to back up what they're doing. So my, my preference would be number two, to appoint Cindy Tara Panny to fill the vacated seat of Phyllis Colianis and to appoint Ms., Ms. Bean for the unexpired term of Keaton Tunstall.
Well, thank you. Well, I preferred option one. I'd like to see Carol Johnson to move up so we have a continuity. She's been serving as an alternate for a while. I'd like to see Ms. Tara Panny to be a regular member. And as an alternate, I'd like to see Mrs. Bean. So how are we doing so far?
Okay, well, option one is one for the, it would be to move Carol Johnson from alternate to a regular member, to appoint Mrs. Tara Panny as a regular member to fill the unexpired term of Keaton Tunstall and to appoint Ms. Bean as an alternate to fill the unexpired term of the alternate position.
She has more votes?
She has two, Ms. Pace has one, and Mrs. Cornell has one.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? I need a motion.
Can I, this is a little bit different. Can we just talk about what, what just happened? I just, I don't want to understand, so.
Do you want me to repeat it?
So when we make the, like, I suggest these individuals, it's whoever has the most suggested.
Yeah, we make a motion for that.
Okay, so whoever is the top out of the four suggestions, suggestions are going to be the ones that fill the seats then, right?
Correct.
Can you repeat it then one more time for me?
This would be to move the current alternate member, Carol Johnson, as a regular member to fill the vacancy left by Phyllis Colianis. This term expires May thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one. And to appoint Mrs. Tara Panny as a regular member to fill the unexpired term of Keaton Tunstall. This term will expire May thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen. And to appoint Mrs. Bean as an alternate member to fill the unexpired alternate position. This term expires May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty.
Okay.
Yeah, got it.
Now I need a motion?
I have a motion to approve that situation.
That's late? Second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
No.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. Thank you. Well, that concludes the agenda tonight and we go into the staff comments.
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
No comments?
No comments. Mr. Licorice?
First, Chief Young, or future Chief Young wants to make a comment. Do you want to come to the podium? I want to get him some training. He doesn't know he's coming forward.
He's surprised.
As a result of the commissioned item tonight, I want you to talk a little bit about what's happening in September sixth.
Oh, okay, that's fine. Got me a little nervous there. I didn't know what I was supposed to say. September sixth is going to be a grand day. With your passing of this tonight, we will be promoting Just Not Myself that day, but we're promoting six other individuals from our department. We'll be promoting two district chiefs, two deputy chiefs, and two lieutenants that day. As far as I can remember back, and I'm sure Chief Butcher, we've never had this many promotions in one time. So this is a big day. This ceremony is going to be like City Manager said before, unlike ever seen in this city before. It's going to be a grand ceremony. We have scheduled, as long as they show up, three bagpipers, snare drums, bass drum, the whole nine yards, honor guards and everything going on that day. So it's going to be quite the day. So I hope everybody can make it. It's going to be one o'clock on September sixth. So bring your party hat.
Thank you, looking forward to it.
And again, this, this is going to be a traditional promotion.
This is a traditional type promotion.
Going old school.
Military style.
Enough of this new school stuff. We're going old school on this one.
Is that what they're doing?
Yes, we have an honor guard academy going on right now that we're sponsoring. We have about seventeen individuals from other departments and everything, a week long. And actually, Friday afternoon, four-thirty, four, four-thirty, there'll be, they're actually having a graduation for the honor guard people. They're out there, if you drive by, they're marching all over by the station out there. They're, they're working their tails off for this. So if you're able to make it by and see them, there's about four, four-thirty. They said there should be a graduation for these people that are going through the process. So it's really, we're really happy for it.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I just want to say that the fire department has the best Facebook account.
Yes.
Like, I mean, that's, I learned so much about what they're doing through Facebook. I send Trish screenshots. That's how we do my, you know, the little letters we do for, like, promotions and when they're done with their first-year term. So I just, that's, that's, that's really awesome that the public can see what's going on, see the training, see the honor guard stuff. So whoever's in charge of that and taking pictures, keep that up. And I'd like to see, we're appropriate, obviously, other departments if they do similar things.
Thank you.
If I may, I'd like to thank the mayor, commissioners, and this board for everything you've done for me personally and professionally over the last thirty-nine years. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I believe when we have the announcements on the promotion, will that be tomorrow? We'll make sure you forward to the commission. We should have, we should all have all the promotions for you and we'll forward them to you tomorrow.
Okay. Madam City Clerk?
I have no comments.
Nothing, okay. Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Seber?
No comments.
Commissioner Carr?
I want to say thank you to the current deputy chief, soon-to-be chief, on his assistance in getting the flag back out on the cell tower out off Golf Road behind the fire department. It was great to see that show back up this past week. So thank you for your assistance with that. I know it wouldn't have shown up without your help, so appreciate it.
Good, thank you. Well, I have announcements and comments to make. On Friday, September first, we have the First Friday Event, which begins at six PM. At ten PM. I can't believe it's a month ago. That's going to be on Tarpon Avenue. September second through September fourth, down at the Sponge Docks, we have the Arts and Crafts Festival from ten AM to six PM. And I'd like to welcome the new business in town artist Kelly Pop on South Panellus Avenue. I'd like to extend my deepest condolences to Mr. Roger Salu and his family on the passion of his wife, Roberta Salu. May her memory be eternal. I also like to extend my condolences to our county commissioner, David Eggers, and his family on the passion of his father, Jim Eggers. And my last one, Mr. Licorice, we discussed it in the past, that I'm receiving complaints from people that the water bill has been increased. After talking to a lot of people, I noticed that some people don't realize that the water and the sewer are actually related. related, that the more water they use, the more that you pay for the sewer, so I'm gonna ask if it's possible to have a presentation during the VOC meeting, perhaps sometime next month, to explain that, about the water bill, actually, that's a utility bill, because on the bill, it's not only for water, but it's for stormwater, it's for sewer, it's for sanitation, and backflow, and of course, you have the utility tax, so it's a combination of services that we do.
We put that on the agenda.
If you would, please, thank you. That's all I have, that concludes the regulation session meeting, and it's adjourned at eight thirty-six. Thank you, and good night.